All set?
Yep.
Okay. On a pledge of allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands on the nation under God, in the bosom of the liberty of justice for all. Okay, open meeting to the public.
I see you've got nothing on the agenda for forty, forty-three Chapman Street. Is there anything planned for that, or?
Not that I'm aware of yet. Tom's not here today.
He was, he was supposed to write a letter to this guy and, you know, have you heard anything about it?
I spoke with Tom after the last meeting to see if he had heard anything since then. And I've sent him a couple emails, but I haven't gotten any more back from him. And I just have no update.
Going on six months.
Anyone else?
Hi, my name is Charlie Sample. For those who don't know me, I've been a resident of Roses Point most of my life. I know a lot of you are aware there's been a large interest in this banner project, the hometown hero banner project. Myself and a small group of ladies, including Pat, has decided to form a committee on this project. And we would like to get your approval before we begin. I have, we did a lot of research. We created the applications. I'd like to pass out the applications to you guys so you can go over it if you have any questions. I know this has kind of been a long time coming. A lot of other towns and villages have had great success in this. And I think we're hoping to see the same thing with your approval. We are, this is a long process. I know a lot of people seem very anxious at first and want it one right away. I've kind of, I created a Facebook page to kind of calm that down a little bit to say, you know, this is going to take a while, there's a lot to this, a lot of questions. We had to figure out all our, you know, what we were going to require. We did mimic, I got a lot of applications from many other towns. I worked for the town of Shayside, so we didn't, the town did not participate, but I was able to get a lot of information from the residents who did, so that was really helpful. The village of Champlain I worked with, I talked to Janet a lot. Their application I thought was spot on, so we really did coincide with their application, their requirements and stuff. So that part was pretty, once we got to it, a lot of the towns pretty much required the same thing. We kind of wanted to go with all the other towns and that. So we would like to start after, as soon as possible after we get your approval, get the applications out. We would have a deadline by the end of the year initially to start for the next season. The banners would be displayed from May to November each year. I did talk to Jason Juno to see what we had for polls, you know, I don't, it's hard. We don't know the turnout we're going to get. We hope it's big, we think it's going to be big. But it's really hard at this point to know, like, are we going to have to use all forty-nine polls on Lake Street? Do we have to use Maple Street? So I got numbers and maybe every other poll. It just is going to depend. We would have to ask your road crew to put them up and take them down each year. But other than that, we are purchasing all the brackets and everything for all, yeah, all the hardware needed. So that would be nothing to the village expense or anything like that. This is completely nonprofit. We've created, we have, I have EIN already, creating, we're opening a bank account with a couple of us that are going to be signers, all nonprofit. We're only charging what the banners and brackets are going to cost. There's been a lot of good, the brackets hold up pretty well. You have a couple that break here or there. So our intention is to only have your road crew to put up and put down, but if one breaks or whatever, we'd have to ask for their help. That'd be the only other thing. Does anybody have any questions on the application or?
I do.
Yep.
I see it's, it's starting, it's going to, it's going to be exclusive to military personnel at the start? Because I saw ones up for like firefighters and police officers in other towns.
This is what we, as a committee, this is what we decided. We're open to suggestions, of course. If you want to open it up, we could look into that.
Okay. Maybe down the line.
Right. Yeah, absolutely. I mean, things can change every year, too. We're gonna, you know, the applications are always going to be ongoing. This will be an ongoing project for sure.
Okay.
I think it's a very good idea.
Yeah, of course. I'm happy to see that we've got a lot of progress on this now.
Yes.
It does say that we'll, that we'll storm for a two-year period. If they want to, can they extend that?
It's all going to depend on what we get for applications. If we have a waiting list, no, I think we have to cut it off at two years. If there's not a waiting list, I'd like to see them up there, you know? If we have the polls available, let's leave them up. If the family wants them though back, we will decommission and return to the family though, if they only want it up for a couple of years. So if we have a waiting list, like, two years is the deadlock, is the, you know, max at. But if not, if they want them up, but they'll wear too. I mean, they're in the summer, so it's not so bad, but those banners will wear. So it, I guess the family, if they want them up longer.
You'd be like, we'll bleach them out and wind will tear at them, so they'll.
Right, yeah, especially being on the lake, you know, we do get that wind, too. So they might wear a little more right along Lake Street.
And they could be put on Champlain Street or Eleven coming in.
Yep.
Lake Street.
Yep. I have Lake Street, Champlain Street, Pratt Street if needed. I don't want to go there because we have to go up further, I think, because you have the nice, I think you have a nice line of ones, we have to go up further. So I, I think we're going to prefer Lake Street to start, then Champlain Street, and then down Maple if Maple's needed.
Yeah. Because Lake Street and Champlain Street have more traffic.
Right, absolutely.
So you can't pick where you want one?
No. The committee will decide. I have had a couple people, I don't see issues with people. Not if somebody wants one on State Street, no. You know what I mean? We're, we're going to keep it. But somebody said, whoa, my father used to live here, can we put it on that pole in front of his house? I don't see an issue with that. I mean, and, and as a committee, you know, we, we put it in there because we don't want people to say, can you put it on State Street, you know? So, but other than that, yes.
That becomes a lot of fighting.
Yeah, other than that, I, I don't see an issue with asking for placement as long as possible, yeah.
Very good. Thank you.
I'll put that in the form of a motion so it's official to allow the hometown heroes to go forward with their committee and have full cooperation with the village.
Great, thank you.
All in favor?
Aye.
Thank you, guys.
Chair, can I get another copy of this for you, please?
Yep, yeah.
Any other public comments?
Hi, my name is Maslouis Rodriguez. I'm part of the Fourth of July Independence Committee. We are requesting permission to do, well, actually I have two requests for two different committees, but the first is for the Independence Day Committee. We've raised money all year long to make sure that we have a great kind of Fourth of July. So we're requesting permission to do a boot drive this Saturday, the twenty-fifth, on Lake Street from nine to three P.M. And they told me I had to come in front of you guys and ask permission, so that's one reason I'm here. The second reason is I'm also part of the breast cancer committee with Joan Sterling and the Real Men Wear Pink for October. And we're trying to raise $2,500 per person, which, on my team, I have three people. And Janice St. John has a couple of people as well. And we're asking permission as well to do a boot drive in October, October ninth, from nine to three P.M. as well.
You have street signs to, for slow and stuff like that, cones and stuff like that?
We do.
I've got no problem with a boot drive, does it?
I make a motion that the committee have their boot drive.
One second. All in favor?
Aye.
For both?
For both.
For both.
So twenty-fifth and the ninth.
Yes.
Be safe.
They'll be out.
Twenty-fifth of September?
Twenty-fifth of September will be for the Fourth of July Independence Committee. And we'll have the signs up and everything. And on the ninth of October, we'll do the breast cancer, whereas for Real Men Wear Pink, which I apologize in the head of time that my husband will be wearing it.
Very nice.
Thank you.
Yes.
Anybody else? Okay. Minutes of the previous meeting.
I make a motion that the minutes be accepted at the minute.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Bills. Any questions on the bills? Any additions or deletions?
No. Yes, I have a question. On page five. Stafford Owens, Legal Services, $1,425. What's at the bill today? It says miscellaneous matters. I mean, can we get a breakdown of what does miscellaneous matters? There's people in the audience here that's been asking for weeks from Tom Renee for results of different ongoing issues that we have. And the only thing we're getting is miscellaneous matters. I have a problem with that. I'd like to have it broke down, but at least let us know what's going on.
Okay.
He was going to be told that tonight if he was here, but unfortunately he's not.
No, no. I asked him last week if he was going to be here and he said he wasn't going to be.
The second issue I have is page seven. Here's, end of the page, a mile reimbursement for yourself, Mr. Mayor, for $609.50.
Because I drove over to the MEUA conference in my own car.
Why didn't you take the village car?
Don't want to.
We have a policy that you have to follow. This is the Roses Point Village travel policy that says that if a car is available, you have to use it. You have a copy of this, you voted on it.
Yeah, I want, I don't have a copy in front of me, I'd like to look at it.
So as that is noted, I'd like to take that one bill off the list of bills and I would make a motion to approve the bills without the mileage reimbursement.
I'll second that. It simply says encouraged. A personal vehicle may be used if offered. Employees or village representatives are encouraged to use a village vehicle if the appropriate arrangements can be made. A personal vehicle may be used when the village vehicle is not available, but there's no.
The village vehicle sat in the garage down there all week. I looked at it all week, every day, it never moved. That is your gun.
But it's also not a requirement that I take it.
You have to have, you have to have board approval to travel. That's part of the travel policy.
I had board approval to travel to the MEUA conference.
Yes, to go to the conference, but not to use your own vehicle. That's part of the rules and the regulations that we go by.
They're your rules.
It just says they're encouraged. They're your rules, we need to follow them. And why should the village be spending $600 of gas money or mileage money when we have a village vehicle? We might as well sell the vehicle if we're not going to use it. That's my point. Why leave the vehicle in, I mean, our son has gone to.
Nightcom.
Nightcom meeting. Would he take? He took the village vehicle. That's what it's there for.
It says encouraged.
I just follow your policy. We have rules, we got to follow them.
It says encouraged.
Well, it doesn't say must. You bring it up at the next meeting and when the full board's here and see if you can get it re-approved. But what I read is that the village vehicle is there, you need to use it.
Encouraged to use it.
Well.
And obligated to.
Why should the taxpayers have to go above and beyond and pay for something for that, that we don't have to pay for? It just doesn't make any sense.
They still have to pay the expenses with village vehicle in terms of maintenance and everything else.
It's a hybrid, yeah. What do you think we bought it for? To go on trips? So I have a motion, pay the bills, accept that one.
I second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Nay. Yes, thank you.
Oh, what about the Stafford bill? Is that being tabled for the next meeting, or is that?
No, that can be paid, but I would like to know what, what the matters are about. And that could be forwarded on to Mr. Renee. We don't want to end up having late charges on that.
Okay, next thing. Any correspondence today?
No.
I called the assessor for the revenue way property. I haven't heard back from him, although I did, I did get him on the phone, he just hasn't called me back yet. And I called him today and left an additional message to follow up.
We're supposed to have, we're supposed to have, Mr. Rosenbaum was supposed to get ahold of you to do the assessment. You have to have an independent assessment.
Yeah, it's the guy I called.
Oh.
I just, I just didn't remember his name.
Oh, the, the assessor in Champlain or Rosenbaum is, okay, the one that.
He had a wrong deck.
Okay, he's, he's going to come appraise the property.
Yeah.
Okay.
I don't know what, yeah, what, I don't know when yet, he was busy. And he hasn't gotten back to me on that.
No, but at least I left a message to contact you because you have to sign the agreement with him.
Yep.
To go forward on this property.
Yeah.
So, okay.
Champlain, a couple people from the town of Champlain contacted me about a motion to rename the walk bike path to the Harry McManus Trail. I don't have a resolution for that. But what is the board's thoughts on that?
Yeah, if they want to do that, that don't make any difference to us.
They were supposed to send us a resolution. Jason Borri said that he was going to forward us a, a resolution.
We do have one. It wasn't written up in like our format. It's got to be rewritten.
Oh.
I haven't had time to do that yet. I only got it to Susan Friday night, so she hadn't had time to do it either. Do we want to, like, have a motion on that now, or just table it till next meeting?
No, I'll make a motion, we, we do that. When you hit the paperwork, fill it out.
Yep. One second. Sounds good to me.
Then we would have to do the resolution with a roll call vote?
Yes.
Yeah.
Okay. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Let's see. Susan called the sheriff and the state police. She called to ask if they provide monthly reports, but they haven't responded back, back to Susan yet, or I. What else do I have in my pile of papers here? One of the things I found out at the MEUA meeting is the rider that's on the contract we get for our hydro.
Yes.
Everyone's got a copy of that now.
Yes.
This allows us for any company that moves in that does not qualify for New York Power Authority Municipal and/or Rural Competitive Economic Development Program, they have, have to put the bill for all the supplemental they put us in, push, push us into in the village, as well as they have to put the bill for any upgrade, upgrades to the system required to serve them safely. They have to put the bill for any up, well, the upgrades, any studies, and so on. So if they want to move in, we have a rider here that we can use, so if they can come in, they have to pay for everything, which is really nice.
That's good. Yep.
And I kind of, I wish this came out earlier. It's been a rider to the contract since 2018, but I didn't find out about it until the MEUN. So we'll have to figure out how Plattsburgh has implemented this. And then from there, if we can figure out how they implemented it, we could probably implement it here. And I think that'd be a good enough discouragement.
Yep.
It'll make the cryptocurrency and data mining thing redundant.
Good to know.
Okay, is there anything else? Trustee Arnold?
I ain't got very many things. I'd like to see the village crew take down the flowers. They're, they look pretty ratty and they haven't watered them since last week. So I'd like to see them taken down. Next thing I got is, I'd like to have an executive session on a particular person.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Is that all we've got?
Nope. I talked to Mr. Linkort, Mr. Todd Linkort from Fine Street. He called me up and asked me if I go up and look at his driveway. That the village did some damage in his driveway with the backhoe. And so I think the village should be paying for his driveway to be refixed. So I called up Mr. Shinbear. Mr. Shinbear went and looked at it. And it's a hundred dollars to fix his driveway. Here's the quote here. And he said that he talked to you and he, and you said that the village wouldn't do nothing about it.
Is this to seal the entire driveway?
Well, you're going to have to seal the whole, the entire driveway because the, the thing is thirteen feet back from the edge of the sidewalk. Plus the grooves in the sidewalk are like five feet back at the backhoe knee.
My phone's in the back there. I took a photo of it, the only, when I was there to talk with him, the only thing he pointed out was something that was within three feet of the driveway.
Yeah, three or five feet.
Yeah, about this long.
It's six and a half inches long and about half inch deep. I mean, we've done the damage, the village backhoe did the damage, and I think we should pay for it. And have it resealed.
Yes. I make a motion to pay for the $100 for the repair of the driveway.
Okay. Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And I'd like to state that I talked to Susan the other day. The resolutions that we read here at the village board meeting on the fire department, there was eight of them.
Yep.
And out of the eight of them, four of them were crooked. And she had the, the seal on the wrong side on one of them. They didn't have no frames for them. Our son went and bought frames, which I think is pretty cheap for the village to buy frames at the dollar store. For these people that got these resolutions, I mean, sixty-five years, fifty years, forty years, thirty-five years, stuff like that, I think it's an awful shame. And they use copy paper for the resolution instead of a, a nice paper.
That's the only paper we've got in the village office.
Well, you should buy some other paper. I mean, that's ridiculous. Susan wasn't going to do it, and I said, never mind, don't do it. I says, I don't care. I said, I'll have them done myself. But it's, it's a shame that the village, if you don't, if you think of the fire department the way you think that, well, you probably better not be here or whatever.
She did repaint, re-crench them and re-stamp them.
Right, she did. She did do it, right. But it's an awful thing, like I said, to have a certificate like that just on regular copy paper. You could have went up to the border press and got some paper up there. They, they had it.
So just, so for future reference, you'll order.
Yes, I, I would think so. I mean, it's only like, probably eight dollars for a sheet of ten or something like that. I mean, when all the other people give out resolutions and stuff, I mean, the, the frames and stuff like that look like they're a $50 frame, you know? And we got some from the dollar store. That's, that's a shame.
That wasn't where, where we got, where we got the frames from.
And I had to buy one for myself, but they didn't, they didn't have enough of them. Just to let you know.
Okay. I wasn't aware where we got the frames from.
No, whatever. And what else? I guess that's it for now.
Did you get a chance to talk to the librarian about the step?
Oh, no, she wasn't, she wasn't there and stuff like that. I didn't get a chance. She was stepped out, I guess, or whatever, stuff. So I'll talk to her tomorrow and I'll leave a note in your basket or whatever.
Actually, this just reminded me of three things. So I'm going to take the old time now. I spoke, I spoke with Adam about the stairs. But currently, because contract, if you're supposed to help with the stairs, it's too, it's too busy for this year. The plan is to do it in the spring.
Right.
So that's the delay for that.
We're just wondering, we're wondering if the funding would be okay to hold off for this time, because.
It's supposed to be good until April. So we might have to do a thing or, like, we started before April, so the funding is still good. And we, I'll have to talk with Susan, because I only spoke with Adam last week on Friday. And she might be able to get it extended again. We've been extending that for three years now?
I spoke to Adam this week and he said that we shouldn't lose our grant. He talked to the contractor and stuff, and the way that he's going to do it and bill it, we shouldn't lose our grant money.
Right.
We just want to make sure that the grant money doesn't go through the cracks and we lose out.
This has been going on for a long time. The first emails are from, on this are from like Dan Leternos administration.
But we do need to secure the contractor down to a definite date so they don't put us off any longer. So if they're saying they're going to start in March or April on demolition, then we hold them to that.
Yep.
And have another year pass by.
Oh, yeah, we're going to have to.
Okay.
Okay. Requesting an executive session to talk about a person.
Second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Requesting an executive investigation about an, an, an executive session about an investigation.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
And requesting an executive session to talk about an individual plea. Second that. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay. Trustee Alki?
Yes. Trustee Arnold brought up last meeting about Eric Guley. He passed his, his test for his water plant. Now we have to do a motion to promote him from a trainee to a water plant operator. So Danny, the, the water superintendent passed that on today when I had a meeting with him. He would like us to formally put that into a form where he would get his, his title changed. So I'll put that.
Sorry.
Any questions?
Would this be a resolution for a roll call vote?
I would think so. Yeah, it has to do with money, so, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. So he would go from a trainee because he, he passed, he did his time, he passed his courses, and he had his health department meeting with the walkthrough and everything was passed. So we have to bring him from a trainee to an operator. So it's to our benefit. So I'll put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that. All in favor?
Aye.
No, we don't have a resolution written in front of us to go on. Again, it's kind of like the Harry McMan, renaming the path to Harry McManus. We don't have a resolution. I'm not sure if a motion like this would be adequate.
Well, we got to wait for another two weeks.
Well, we gotta wait for another two weeks before we put him into that position?
Yeah, it'd be back, it'd be effective retroactive, yes.
Well, we can see if we can do it with just a motion. So I'll put it in the form of a motion, whoever wants to.
All in favor? Second? Second, anybody?
Second.
And everyone says aye. And then if that's all that's needed, he's good. If we need to do a resolution, he's good.
And like you said, it would retroback.
Yep.
So when he got his certificate. Okay, we had a meeting with PLM. They're an engineering outfit at an institute that are gonna end up being our engineer for our electric system. So they are a member of the MEUA, part of our association, so we kinda get a break on, on the charges and the cost. Right now, they're the engineers for Lake Placid and Tupper Lake. There are other municipalities just like us. They are currently doing the arc flash study for us, and they're gonna do a system-wide study. And we had a meeting, myself, Trusty Arnold, and Mayor with Matt Donalds and Ken West. Very well. I was very pleased at the end of the day that when we found out of what we're, when we have questions, now we can pick up a phone and we can ask if we're going in the right direction or not. So our electric system is very vital to our village, and we want to keep it that way. So we're just trying to keep a close eye on it. The other thing I have is, we had a water plant meeting with Barton Luntus on Friday. There's an update on the ninety percent of the construction of our new water plant. Everybody has questions about this water plant, you know, the cost and, and when it's gonna happen. Well, after talking with the engineers, what they're looking for, what we're looking for from the village, as the village arrives point is to be shovel-ready, so when we do have to have a water plant, we're gonna be ready to go. They were talking years ago when we started this, we were supposed to get a forty percent grant paid for, and the village would have to bond the other sixty. Well, after talking with them, they're talking with about, there's gonna be a lot of money available that's coming down the pipeline. And if you're shovel-ready and you're ready to go, you'll be at the top, you'll be the first ones to be picked to go and get these projects done. So when they're throwing this money, we'll be in good shape to-
Right.
To have our new water plant. And hopefully, we'll keep the rates about where they are, and we'll be able to move forward with the new, new technology and what's available. So after the meeting, I ended up talking with the health department. He was, uh, I knew him from years ago when I worked for the village. And we were talking out in the parking lot after, and he said, Brian, he said, when they said forty, sixty, he says, I don't believe it. He said, I think it's gonna be the other way around. He said, the village might end up with sixty percent rent money and forty percent that you'd have to pay. He said, that's how good he feels about this, this money that's gonna come from the state and from the federal. So hopefully, we'll end up with a new water plant, and we'll be in good shape. And maybe someday supply other communities with water, because we have the capability and the possibilities. So after that meeting, I thought it went very well.
Oh, yeah, definitely.
Because I was worried about, if we have all these plans, how long do they last? He said, you can put them on the shelf for a few years. He said, until the money is available, maybe we can go forward.
Not only that, it's gonna be less expensive, because the materials for the building and stuff like that has gone down.
Everything is dropping back down.
Dropping back down.
Because of the cost of materials, exactly. So it, we're in a good, we're in a good place, so.
And we're all- Oh, sorry.
I, I just thought that meeting went very well also.
Yes.
It'll be, it'll be easier for operation costs as well, because you won't have to get to DE anymore.
Right. And it wouldn't be manned twenty-four seven. It'd be automated. I mean, we're gonna be in a good place.
Oh, yeah.
And if anyone has any questions, you can contact any one of us board members, and, you know, we'll show you the plans that we have. I mean, I'm very open. I have, I'm retired. I know Trusty Arnold retired. We'll sit down with anybody if they want to look at these plans and review of what's in the pipeline.
Yeah, we've got extra copies of the plan at the village office. And so many of the board members have a copy. I gave my copy to Susan for the records. And here's this sheet that fell out. It'll be a nice looking building, too.
Okay, one last thing. I need one executive session to talk about a particular employee. One second.
All in favor?
Aye.
So I got.
Other reports. Cooper?
Joe. Oh, Joe, sorry. I'd like to start with thanking the village employees for the job that they did on the sidewalk out here. They did a really good job, and they did really quick. Also, I've been talking with the other board members. We would like to get certificates made for Kate Papin and Nancy Baker for twenty-five years, and they've been doing the flowers in the village. How's the board feel about that?
I think that's a great idea. Excellent idea.
I think all four of the ladies, is there four or six of them, should be recognized somehow.
I got, that's two names I got right now.
Yeah, they've been doing it for years. They're, I think they were the-
Twenty-five years.
They were the first people that started.
Yeah.
But if you notice that there's ladies out there, and they're out there early in the morning watering the flowers and weeding them, taking care of them, and I think they all need to be recognized.
Yeah. So we'll get the other three names, or four names, whatever, and I think we should have a little, uh, certificate form or something.
I'll put that in the form of a motion.
I'll second that.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. We'll make something like we did for the Fourth of July meeting.
Yes, yeah, that's good.
And that's all I got. Just writing them down.
Yeah.
Okay, sorry about that. Any report, Cooper?
Just some regular reports. We're just taking care of complaints as usual, and of course, I'm gonna meet with you guys after the executive session.
Do you have anything official on the, on the place on Chapman Street? Any correspondence?
I haven't, I haven't received anything.
Nothing for-
And I have, well, I, I have asked counsel, our counsel, several times for an update in what kind of legal action he has discussed with Dave Eberkamp about what's going on. I have not received anything on that. And I would, I would like to receive something, because I can, at the end of the month, I can give him like a few days and start, we can start actually taking him to court. But I need something from our lawyer to go forward with.
I think it's getting to the point where the village of Rosas Point has to do something for our community up there. I mean, the people have been, they've been six months at this. I've been talking to a few different public officials, and they're thinking that we should get ahold of Kimberly Davis from the treasurer, County Treasurer, and ask her that if the village does take the responsibility for this building and take it down, will put it on his taxes. I know they don't like to do the big commercial buildings anymore, but I was told that it's possible that they'll do the residential ones. So I'd like to check into that. I wanted to call Kimberly Davis and ask her and see if we can go forward on getting something done with this place on Chapman Street.
The only action I've got is I emailed Dave several times and asked him to clean up, because the residents, the local residents on both sides asked me to do so. And I called them, they, they emailed me, actually, and I asked them if it had been cleaned up, because he promised me they'd do the outside perimeter, you know, cut the grass and all that, and I was told no on Monday. On Tuesday, they emailed me back and said somebody had come up and mowed the lawn and things, but that's not what we want. We want the mess picked up and this darn thing taken down.
Well, now, now there's like animals, the raccoons getting in there. I mean, the winter's coming, so something has to be done.
Well, I'll say, just like the gentleman had it earlier, it's been six months. Something has to be done here.
Even if we have to get the health department involved, something's gotta be done.
Yes, I agree with you a hundred percent. I think that's something, but like I said, you know, our counselor should be on top of this after six months.
I just want to make sure that the village doesn't get stuck with the building.
No, no, we'll make sure we do it the right way, yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah. But, uh-
Depending on how, on the age of the building, and we have, if we have to do asbestos testing. Can't just-
Asbestos testing, I found out asbestos testing is not a big deal. You have K and S come in, they'll do the same, one, they'll, they'll identify the areas. And as long as you're taking responsibility of the property, you can dispose of it at the local landfill. That's what I found out.
That's nice to know.
If they'll accept it, that's another thing.
Yeah, well. St. Mary's took so long to demolish, because they could only take one truck load out a day. Because they, because they were concerned about asbestos at the St. Mary's school. And the dump, the dump that would take the asbestos, asbestos only accepted one load a day.
Oh, we'll make sure we got a big truck.
Yeah.
I mean, most of the building is brick, I mean.
There shouldn't be too much asbestos in there. Any, any other report, Matty? Mrs. Falke, any other report? Sorry if I used your first name. I felt I could remember what your last name is.
Darren. Darren.
Darren, okay. Uh, open the meeting to the public again? Yep.
Just like to know if, uh, on Chapman Street, if you're allowing truck traffic to go through there. We're getting a lot of tractor-trailer trucks on Chapman Street. I don't think that's the intention of that street to draw trucks through there. It's been going on for quite a while. I don't know if they're not seeing the sign or-
We'll have to check and see if the signs are still posted. If there is a weight limit-
There was a five-ton weight limit on both ends. Posted, maybe.
It's not happening. They're going through.
Did they have some chat?
We'll have to see if the, the signs are still posted, and if not, we can pass that on to the sheriff.
Thank you. I've got one last thing, but I guess your number two. I've received a few questions about the bills for the signs in the rec center for the skating rink being assigned during COVID when no one could see it. Any thoughts on that? We could waive it for 2020 because of the rec center being closed and everything, give them a three-years' result. I have a question we should have, that we should also have with our sen here, but it's something to bring it up. I'd rather people stay in there and pay future instead of them just getting angry and taking the signs out. It's good for thought for the next meeting. One of our sen's here. See how much it would cost just to wait for the fee, and see who's paid, see who hasn't paid. Figure that out.
So did you talk to Mr. Coughlin about the sidewalk?
Yes, the sidewalk in front of that new, that building you just got?
Yeah.
I also spoke with the highway, the state highway guy. Uh, according to him, they're just gonna restore the sidewalk, and they're just gonna write that sidewalk section off as non-compliant. It's not really the optimal solution, because then it's not compliant for the crosswalk, for ADA, but then if these people with wheelchair system get into that office building. And that's apparently what the state highway crews are gonna do. I do track a lot of the stuff. I just have lots of other stuff going on, too. Yeah, it was a nice conversation with the highway department guy. A lot of the curving is as it is, because New York State requires a six-inch clearance for the curves. So even though some of the curving is a trip hazard, because you've got the sidewalk load and you've got the road load, and you have a curb there, that is required by the state, the curb be six inches high. So they can't really do anything about that, and if they match the sidewalk to the curb, then they don't have ADA compliance with the crosswalks. It's, the downside of retroactively fitting a bunch of old sidewalks for modern standards is that you get wonderful things like that where curbs don't match the sidewalk, sidewalk doesn't match the curb, it creates trip hazards. Eventually, it's a state thing, though, not our problem. Eventually, the street will just have to be redone, so the curb, so the sidewalk can be redone properly. But that won't be happening until they, until they finally decide to repave downtown. Which could be ten years, could be fifteen years. Don't know. It's not perfect, but that is what New York State Highway Code requires. Okay, uh, motion to adjourn.
I make a motion, we go into recess?
Uh, recess, yes.
Second?
All in favor?
Aye.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, guys.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Lieutenant.
Take care, Gavin.